This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call it to order. This meeting of the Monterey Select Board at 6:00 PM February 15th. We have all here at Town Hall. The first is the Community Center Pavilion in Procurement. So the last time we discussed this, we discussed whether an RFP or splitting the project might be a better way to go. But I think at this point, it's clear that getting an engineer to drop specs in bidding is the more is the legal option and the better option.
I just want to throw out there that I my impression thus far is that if this project wants to go forward as written, it's become increasingly clear that it's gonna have to have a bathroom, a second bathroom.
Let Susan talk, let Susan say what she.
I understand that you don't agree with it, and I'm not saying I wish that was not the case. But it, I mean, we would have to basically get a variance, as I understand it. Unless you have other information, I think it would require a variance from the state. And I don't know that we would like, they're not. It's not common to get. So I want to throw out there that one poss- another possibility would be to figure out how to achieve the same end in a way that wouldn't hit the trigger to require the additional bathroom. I just, I'm trying to figure out a way to get the job done in a way that we'll all be happy with, that isn't gonna hit the trigger, that makes it probably so much more difficult.
Thank you, Susan, that that makes total sense to me.
I do believe that the Community Center achieved a variance to operate as they are operating now.
I believe you're correct.
I'm not familiar with the variance process. But, I mean, I think that should be explored because pavilions in general don't have plumbed-in bathrooms. It seems like they have porta-potties when there are events.
You're not gonna get me to disagree. I think the rule is ridiculous.
Well, I'm just saying, I wouldn't be surprised, and I'm not familiar with the variance process, but I wouldn't be surprised if it couldn't be. There's other, there's other questions I have about the project. But I think it would be good to explore the variance process for the bathroom before assuming that a bathroom is necessary.
You're not even gonna be to disagree. I like, I can only speak to having sat on the zoning board. And of course, it's the, it would be a totally different body that we made in that decision. So I can't actually speak to what their issue would like, what their bar is or how they make that decision. I can only say that for zoning rules, the bar you have to meet for a variance versus a special permit is very different. And the likelihood of a person being granted a second variance. I, there's no reason not to go talk to them. I never suggest other that someone not. I just am trying to manage expectations. And I, I understand that you disagree, Wendy, but I just, I don't want to see us keep running into decisions.
You need to, you need.
Just hang on.
So who's going to, Wendy or Mary?
I'm spooking, it's the Ari Maycook Main Road. Um, so I talked with Don Torrico, he said he wanted to hear more about the pavilion and how large it would be and what the intention was to use it. And any details about the pavilion, I could give him. And he has been the building inspector here for years. And he said he'd like to talk to the plumbing inspector. And he understands that we might need to go to Boston, we might need to ask for a variance on a variance, and that is unusual. But he believes that we have a really good case.
Okay.
So were you already aware of that?
This part, no, only the part preceding that.
Right, right, right. So I totally understand what you're saying. You're saying it's a long shot that we might get a variance on a variance? And we're ready to go to Boston, it's only 120 miles if we need to. So it, he said it really made sense. So we have common sense on our side. We may not have the actual law that normally has to do with pavilions because it is a permanent structure. If we have to give up on the pavilion at some point and say, okay, we can't, we're not gonna put in a bathroom because we don't have that money, so we're not gonna do this, so we have to go to something not permanent, then we can entertain that thought. But right now, we don't, we're not necessarily ready to give up on that. I want to make sure you understood that.
And if you guys want to go for it, I, I'm not trying to stop you. I, I literally would love to see it done. I just want everyone to like, be clear about some of the hurdles that might.
Yes, huge hurdles.
Okay, so Wendy Jermaine, Buckingham Lane, Monterey. There's another part of this too, in terms of getting your information. When the septic system was put into the permit, into the Monterey Community Center, the water flow, there were several factors that were in consideration. And our septic system was fine, and that was one of the determining factors in why we had one bathroom. Okay? Think back over what happened. So there's many, many different parts to our town government that need to be involved. The Health Department, the Building Inspector, Krupsky is the Plumbing Inspector. All of these people need to have the total information given to them. And so far, some of them have not been given all the information that they need to be able to give us the information. But I want to, we had, does Lori need to speak? No, when we went back to, I'm just reminding everybody, when we had the Monterey Community Center built, everybody was involved and everybody did how much water was needed, how many people were gonna be in attendance. And based on all that information, we were allowed very easily the variance for one bathroom. Is that correct?
That's correct, but that was many years ago.
I understand that, but I'm saying that there was this process. And it's not that unlike the process we're going through now. How much water, how many people? Those are all the things that Don Torrico, Krupsky, and the Health Department and all want to know.
So my understanding is that one option would be, I don't think anyone's contesting that if a bathroom is necessary, it significantly changes the cost of the project by hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think what probably makes the most common sense, I'm not familiar with the variance process for bathrooms like this.
I think it involves an office in Boston, right?
But if that can be done without spec plans, I think that would probably be the most common sense route forward. If the variance is granted and the building can be built without bathrooms, that's a good thing. If they, if the variance is denied, that's a different discussion. But I don't know that that can be done at that point. I think if that could be done right now, before any further decisions are made, I think that makes sense.
And if they want to try and like, I'm all for it. Go see if you can get an exception. I mean, variance or whatever is required to get through that. I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm talking to my banner. I, my gut feeling was that it might be harder than, than we think. And if you can do it, do it.
Right, we can't just show up there and say, hi, we're from Monterey, we only have 900 people, please let us go. We, I would be looking for a letter of support from Don and/or Mr. Krupsky. I would be looking for a letter for, of support, maybe from Smitty or someone else, you know. I don't know who else. We need the which is broom, so. But we need to try to do it, or else we'll feel like we failed on dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's and.
What you need to get is the affirmation from the building commissioner of our town that you do or do not need said additional bathroom. If you don't have that, there's, there's nothing. So number one.
So from Don Torrico.
If he is the permitting authority, which he is, you have got your plan of what you want. It shows the size of the structure that you want. He's already familiar with the building. He needs to make a determination. And it's his responsibility to make that determination within a certain time from the time you request it. So I'm not certain what triggers it, but he needs to make the determination. Because generally, his determination, if you were a homeowner and you didn't have, say, 200 feet of frontage, his determination for an addition, that normally would be by right if you were conforming, would be he would just make the determination and you could get the permit. In this case, in this case, he's gonna have to make the determination that it's, is or is not required. Then, from there, you can either start to look for funding for the additional bathroom. How much is that gonna cost? And go to somebody who could give you the information so you know, so that we can make a decision with the finance committee, et cetera, and your own committee as to whether the value is there.
Right.
Or then you go and try to get the variance to allow that not to happen.
Right.
But until you know A or B, we're just kind of sitting in a, you know, like, why go all the way to Monterey?
Don said he, he really didn't, he really thought that we deserved the variance.
So my question was.
But you don't want, there's no reason to be deserving of something that you may not need. So you have to find out.
Well, so Scott.
So we may not have to go to Boston.
Your kid for doing something till you know what they did.
Well, Scott, usually when Don makes decisions like that, when Don Torrico makes decisions like that, does he have spec plans?
I don't think he would need specifications other than the use and the required, and what your requirements are. Like, I don't think I would have to go to him with an engineering report showing what, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna put a tent this big next to a building that big that has a toilet this big. What do we need?
Okay.
You know?
So he can make that without us proceeding on engineering plans?
I would stand beside myself if he could, you know? But I really believe that that's all he would need.
And if you wanted a variance, if he said no, and you wanted a variance, would you need spec plans to seek that variance?
Probably, because on our own board of the zoning board, you bring to the zoning board after you've been refused by right, plans for everybody that shows plot, lot lines, where this thing is, where this is going to become. You know, everything has to be described. So at that point, then you might need more information.
The one other piece, I'm not sure I know that, because we've never had one like this come before the GDA.
I don't know if it would come before us.
That's the thing, is that I don't, I don't know if this would have anything to do with the zoning board. I think it has to do with like the plumbing board or something, right? Like, that's what's unclear to me.
It's the plumbing inspector and the Board of Health, yeah.
So the Board of Health.
The Board of Health has nothing to do with the bathroom, they've already weighed in on that.
But they consulted on something.
They consulted on whether the septic would need to be upgraded, which they've said that they will work to make sure that it doesn't require any upgrades. Don Torrico is the one that has said it's the plumbing inspector that determines whether there's a bathroom. He's working with Don.
Generally, you know, generally speaking, you can have as many bathrooms in your home as you wish and have no upgrade to any septic system whatsoever, and still have two of you, or still have a parent and four kids to a normal system. Doesn't matter how many toilets there are, it depends on how many people are actually flushing that toilet.
That goes back.
So it's the amount of people per use. So what they would do is they would look at the total gallons per day and do an analysis of how many gallons per year that toilet system is actually producing in gallonage. And they would come up with a dramatically small amount. This is what they used to do, the Board of Health would do for homeowners that were second homeowners. They knew that it was a burden for them to take underground systems that were still sufficient and force them to go mound when they were only using their home maybe 60 days out of 360. So they would say, okay, the system normally would pass Title V in our old way of life. But because of the hardship involved, your system is still compliant, and we will let that pass. And that the volume of use isn't over the volume of use that it would be prescribed in a normal facility. Does that make sense to you?
So. I mean, enough. So I think at this point, what makes sense is for the, for the Community Center Committee to go to Don Torrico, Bob Krupsky, see.
Don.
Don Torrico.
Don, it's like our TA, and under Don are all the inspectors.
Well, not yet, but.
I mentioned Don on Thursday.
It's up to Don to notify those.
Um, and then determine if a bathroom is necessary. If not, what is the var- if it is required? If not, we'll come, we'll come back and we'll have that discussion about the foresight engineering proposal. If it is required, what is the variance process? Does the variance process require an engineered plans? Because then that's a more complicated decision.
I don't know if that's his, I don't know if he'd be able to answer that.
Well, the variance people should be, someone should tell us what we need.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But he, he just says, okay, this apartment says you can't do it. This is the reason why. Now you take this to your, to the people that'll hear your case.
But he should know, I suspect he will know.
Whether you will need.
Who the, what that organization is, who to go to again.
Oh, I think he'll know that.
Yes.
But I don't think he'll know necessarily what documentation that they would request.
But at least if we know that we need it, and we know who to go to, there's a possibility.
I would imagine it would be extremely similar to what the Monterey zoning board requests.
Very possibly. But I think it's, would be involved and not us. And I don't know what the rules are or what the bar is you have to meet.
You don't have to think of that until you have to.
But I'm pretty, I'm willing to bet it's gonna come down to occupancy for, for that. And so you guys are gonna have to have some kind of number for occupancy, but ask Don.
Right, so we, we had an occupancy for 49, and but there's no bedrooms. And so nobody's sleeping there, the people there for hour, two or three. And we have a flow meter being attached now, so we can actually prove how much is being used.
And it's seasonal.
The only thing is, I mean, this, that's not a decision for this board.
Right, right.
I think all that we are, or that I'm recommending, I don't know if Scott and Susan agree, is that if you're willing to do the work to figure out whether a bathroom is needed, and if it's needed, can, can there be an exemption through a variance? And then, and then come back to us, and then we can proceed forward. But it's really hard to work on this project when we don't know whether or not a bathroom is, is needed as part of the project. And it seems like that.
I do agree with him.
That can likely, likely be figured out. Or it's possible that can be figured out without engineered plans. If they, if Don, if the building office in Monterey denies it and there need to be engineered plans to get a variance, that's a different question.
Right.
But let's find out what the building office in Monterey says first, right? And Scott is, Scott is saying that he doesn't think they need engineered plans to do that.
No, I don't believe so, and this is the first part.
So.
It's not the structure that, that's, that they're looking at. It's the added use to what's already there.
Yeah.
You know, the structure is secondary.
Right, so thank you very much for your time. And Lori, if you don't have a question and Dennis doesn't, I think we're all set.
I'm just, Dennis Lynch. I'm just interested to find out what the timing would be if, for example, next week, assuming there is a select board meeting next week, if, if the building commissioner said it's not necessary, and that was made known to the select board at the meeting next week, what would be the timing, in writing, of course? What would be the timing then for the engineer to do their work so that it could go out to either a bid or a RFP and return two weeks later?
So we have a proposal from, from Foresight.
Right.
And I don't think there was a time specification on their proposal to do the work. So we don't have any timeline beyond if we tell Foresight we'd like them to do the plans, they start. That's the only timeline that we have, that I'm aware of.
And I can give you, they're doing the Foxville Road thing, and he's been working on that for just a little over a month right now. So I can imagine it's gonna be similar.
That question you posed to them.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I guess the committee and the, and the select board is looking that then, until this can all be achieved and decisions made, we're looking at a temporary structure, a tent for this summer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's. Yeah, let's, let's helping us put that in the budget this summer. So we understand this, this is more long-term mission.
Sort of a backup plan for now.
I did see, as a, as a side note, but a Plan C or D behind Old Inn, the pressure-treated lumber structure that they put their tent on.
Yeah.
If it's temporary, I think that makes it probably less susceptible to needing another bathroom. And but it gives you more of a space, in their case, for eating, for dining. But in our case for, it gives you more of a level space that you're not on the dirt.
Justin?
What's that, Wendy?
Mark Andrews, who's on our committee.
Yeah.
He's an architect, he went over to Inn on the Green. And his report, Mary, you can tell me, he reported to us that one of the biggest problems is the amount of time and energy and cost to put the covering on and everything. He was a little concerned that he didn't think that that would be a solution, but it's not completely out of the ballpark. But he's already investigated it as an architect, and he's got some ideas, but he couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah. I just think if that's what, if they're saying we need a bathroom, we can't get a variance.
Yeah.
But if it's a temporary structure underneath a tent, just to make the tent a lot more usable.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be an option.
Right, yeah, we're looking into it further.
But for now, the plan is to go to the building office in Monterey, determine if bathroom is necessary. If they say bathroom is necessary, learn what the variance process is, right?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other comments on that? Item? Item? Okay.
I want to hear about the park.
We're all on the same page then. Item two of Old Business is the Bidwell Park Bank Stabilization. So we got funds from the special town meeting, though articles, it was worded on the warrant and passed, were to clean up storm damage at Bidwell Park. So my interpretation, which is probably nothing new to either view, is that it's an acceptable use of the funds to stabilize the banks with native plants at Bidwell Park after the tree work is done.
I absolutely agree.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. As far as the accountant goes, do we need anything like a formal motion to say that we think that it's legal to spend these funds?
Yeah.
Okay. I would move that the select board approve the use of funds from the special town meeting last fall for cleaning up, that were intended to clean up storm damage at Bidwell Park, that the select board approves the use of these funds for stabilizing the bank with a native, native plants where the tree work was done.
As a continuing part of the cleanup.
Yeah, as a, as a continuing part of the cleanup, it's a good word. Any other discussion on that? Got a second? Yeah, Dennis.
Yes. My thought was to see if the money expended by the town on that project could be used as a local match for two ongoing grants. The Covert Grant, which is an MVP project, and the 319 Grant.
That's what this is.
Right.
This is all a part of what we're using it for.
Okay.
We are, thank you for asking, but yes, we are.
But probably not the treatment of just the native plants.
Correct, correct. Good call, though, Dennis.
I'm glad that it's being done.
I think this was proposed by BRPC.
Yes, it was.
Good thinking, yeah.
Part of all keeping the water clean. If there's no other discussion, we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's seen as a yes vote on that item. The first item of New Business is the Curtis Road Bridge Detour over Gould Road. So I think we, I'm not saying it needs to be done this week, but we need to at some point give Jim some guidance as to whether or not we want Lumber's Lane to be paved or if we want to go with the light, because we're responsible for the detour. And building might be, it's not gonna start this season, it might start this season.
I think we're on the checklist for, for 2023.
So, building might be beginning, at the beginning of the construction season this spring. And then we need to, we are responsible for the detour, whatever that may be.
Dude, as I recall in our last conversation with Jim, he had gotten the numbers for us on buying versus renting. But we also brought up the question of could we buy a used one? Do you know if he had any luck investigating that?
I did mention your comments, and he was strongly against buying anything.
Okay.
Because of the upkeep and repair and the costs of that. And if somebody hits it or damages it.
How about the rental of it from there?
So he looked at United didn't have any, Municipal didn't have any, I don't know.
So it's just the one?
Just the one.
Bar, yeah.
Just the one, and it was $60,000 for 12 months. Assuming they were, they're going to be on time, it was supposed to, it shouldn't even be 12 months, right? Because they would, they were said to do it in one season.
Speaking of which, if we rented, if we, if they didn't finish it in the one season and it had to be continued over to the other season, we'd have to keep that up until, like, I mean, right?
But it wouldn't matter until the, I mean, we would know in terms of budgeting it for fiscal year '25.
I guess what I meant is like, let's say they, I'm just imagining a scenario here, right? Let's say they don't start as soon as the season, building season opens. Let's say they don't get to us, they start in September. And they start the project, and they do September, October, and maybe quarter of November. And then they have to stop work because of the weather. I'm assuming they can't go through the hardest part of the weather. We still have to maintain the detour all the way through in the stopped part, and then they start again next spring. I'm just saying, like, it could actually be a year. So I think we'd have to, right?
We have a plan at least.
We have to plan for it being a year, I guess is all I'm saying. Even though some of that year, depending on where they start, might end up rolling over into the next fiscal year. We, since we don't have control of when they start, I think we have to plan for it being longer, I, I, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could get, start to get really confusing too, because of the fiscal year timing. So this money won't, if we put out an annual town meeting warrant, won't even be available to us until July 1st.
And I don't think, they still have to get a couple easements, I believe, and.
So it's probably not starting this year?
I kind of got the impression, I think, when Sean had presented it, that it wasn't starting till like the fall, or maybe August, September.
That was what I understood from Jim as well.
Well, that's not good to hear, but. I do know they did a couple, the state came in to a couple of bridges in New Marlboro last summer quickly. Very quickly. Or the state paid for the work, they weren't doing the actual work, but. I don't know, my sense is, I know it's expensive, but my sense is to pay for the light and leave Lumber's Lane as it is.
Do we want, when you say leave it as it is, do we want him to do any improvements to the surfacing? Or do we want to just absolutely leave it as it's as it's?
He said he's been putting gravel on it, right? I mean, I don't know, that'd be a better question for Jim as to what he sees fit. But I just, if it's $60,000 or a year and a half and it ends up being $100,000, I prefer the light at that cost over using Chapter 90 to pave it. The other thing about using Chapter 90 to pave it is it's not the town's money immediately. But if we use Chapter 90 money to pave it, it is still coming out of Chapter 90. It's work that could be done elsewhere on the town's roads. It's not just free money with no cost.
Well, there's also the question of maintaining the aesthetic of Lumber's Lane, or that portion of the road.
Well, that's the first, now, concern.
Right.
I, I would think, at least personally.
I'm not disagreeing.
Born and raised here, I would like to keep as, as much natural as possible. And so by paving it, does that get us, would that get us out of having a light? Because you're saying it would be a considered two-lane.
The, making it two lanes, I, I don't, I don't think that paving.
Now, kind of, I mean, I go by the place all the time.
So, yeah, I think two reasonable people going at reasonable speeds, it's two lane. But their point is if all the traffic going over Curtis Road is going over there, it's no longer two lane.
Well, it just becomes a lot busier for a smaller dirt road that can handle two lanes, but.
Well, and can it handle two lanes if we're talking about
No, I agree.
Carrying gravel coming, or an SUV going the other way.
Light is the way to go, just like we used before.
Um, but I don't, and I'm not sure the only options are, I mean, if we need it one lane and we put the lights up, there's also, I think we can pose a question to Jim of
Sure.
Do, is the gravel you have on there already enough for that, or do we need to put something else in addition? Just to make sure the road holds up to the additional wear and tear.
Yeah.
Spoken by someone who almost had her wheels eaten by her road today on the way here, so I might be more sensitive to that than normal.
Well, I think your idea is correct, well, notify Jim of our, our thought that the light is the route to go and.
What do we need to do to get the road to be, to handle the load?
Yeah, and to make sure that we're budgeted for a full year. Plus, whatever maintenance he thought it was gonna run as a, as a added. Just like seventeen hundred.
Okay, but can you let him know, please, that in general, we're leaning towards using the light?
Right, because then we can also get the definitive data on how rental for the light.
Right, because we need that anyway, we don't want to start renting the light long before they, they get here to do the budget.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to add it to the budget. So the budget, and we're gonna have, if there's any further steps that need to be taken with renting the light, I know we kind of have an estimate in that Excel sheet, but we need to, I mean, I think it's a state contract. Is it a state contract? I don't. Okay. Can we, can we look into that, though, and see if any further procurement is necessary in that, please?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to have a contract because it'll be over ten thousand dollars.
Regardless of if it's a state contract, gotcha. All right, so we'll probably take that, deal with that in the future as well, but in general, the feeling is to look into doing a light rather than paving Lumber's Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, once you go paved, you never go back, really, right? And be a forever change. Okay. Item two of new business is the solar consulting agreement with Beacon. So, Melissa reminded me to send it to town council, which I hadn't thought of, thank Melissa. And Donna was concerned at the lack of legal areas in it, like indemnification of the town and that kind of thing, so she is working with Beacon to off of the contract. She just worked with Beacon and Stockbridge, and she said that they're a good company.
Well, that's good, at least.
So we're just on hold for that?
We're just on hold. Um, the select board secretary, annual performance evaluation, um, so I think we touched on this briefly before, but I don't think we had a real consensus. Or a definitive answer, I think there's the regular employee evaluation forms uh, for each employee, and if we all, if everyone agrees, we'll send those to the HR director who will do the meeting with the select board secretary. Does that make sense?
Sure.
That makes sense? Okay. So, can we set a deadline of next Tuesday? Does that work? That would be the 21st?
I've already set mine, so. We're sorry, um, the only thing I was gonna say is that we're her only direct, we are her direct reporter and we're her only reporter. Like, the select board secretary. Oh, that's true, but as a select board secretary, she's only necessary to us, right? Because she wears a different hat, she, she's just made from a different line and wears a different hat. So, is it appropriate for, I mean, you really always work for, with her the most, do you feel like you ought to be there just to be part of the conversation, or are you okay with?
Um, I trust that, you know, Sophia to, to take care of that.
Are you okay with that, Lori? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I wasn't trying to volunteer for more, I'm just trying to, like, I'm trying to get a handle on what the right structure is for doing these, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a con. And I just want to put on your silver on the same page, so I'll send in my evaluation form by Tuesday, and Scott, you as well. And Tuesday, the 21st, to Sophia for Lori. And then I'll tell Sophia. I don't have one. You don't have an evaluation form?
No, I think I've said hello to you three times and walked by four times. Doing great. I mean, really, that's the amount of time.
But you've read it, but you've seen the minutes? That she's drafted.
Great job.
Good.
Okay.
There you go, verbally said it.
All right, okay, so I'll do mine.
Seriously, if I, if I had more direction, I might have something to say, positive, negative, or anything. Just hasn't, hasn't happened.
Yeah. Okay, so I will send that to Sophia and let Sophia know that she has to compile and meet with Lori. Um, the employee handbook is a big project, and unfortunately, I, I got it and we were working on the police chief contract and the town administrator review and this and that, and didn't get to it, but how do, so how do we want to proceed? I frankly was hoping for a little bit more of a cleaned version that read through consistently, uh, and there were no redundancies or inconsistencies, and I feel like it's still in need of review, I mean, in the first section.
Define first section here?
Yeah, I think there's four sections, three sections.
Okay, so like, section one, general, and section two, employee benefits, and section three, employee policy, and section four, acknowledgement.
Yeah, so in the first section, there is the performance evaluations and termination. In the second se- section, there is, you know, a discussion of administrative leave, and then in the third section, there is the performance improvement policy, which frankly, there are inconsistencies on even termination, and I mean, that's just one
Yep.
instance, and I'm just looking at the draft going, it would kind of be difficult. And I mean, in some cases, it's even inconsistent as to what it's asking the town administrator to do versus the HR director versus the select board. And it, it is hard, as someone who would refer to this, or as the board who would refer to this, I think it's a little bit difficult the way that it's currently drafted, and this was my problem with the old handbook, and, and when it's unclear, it is a mess, because the employee thinks one thing, the employer thinks another thing, the HR director thinks it's a third.
Depending on which section you have to look at.
Yeah, and I think that it needs some serious review beyond what has been done to make sure that it's consistent and clear and easy to read. We could do that as a select board, but that would eat up
A lot.
a lot of time over many meetings. I think other options would include asking Sophia to re-review it. But I know that she is busy, and I know that, uh, this is her first attempt at making it clear and consistent. Another option would be hiring someone, we previously had proposals from various um, HR professionals and lawyers that were willing to just go ahead and, and give us a new employee handbook, I think we had two or three proposals. We could return to those people.
Probably look into that.
Another option would be to form an ad hoc committee, which is how I think the employee handbook in some ways was formed in the fir- first place. I do know a couple of HR professionals, lawyers in Monterey that might be interested in serving on the ad hoc committee. As opposed to hiring it out again.
Did you, if, not to poo-poo ad hoc committees, but if the policy that we're not, if the handbook that we're not happy with was written by an ad hoc committee that created the thing that has mentioned in multiple places that conflict with each other, perhaps the ad hoc committee event is not the way to go.
I see that, and I think it would need to be comprised of the right people, and I think Sophia has something to add to the discussion as well.
Right.
I just was, I'm hoping for a, a clean or more consistent, I mean, if we have, and there's the definition section, and sometimes you look at the definition and then you find it in, in other places, and she add, Sophia added some good, uh, policies and cleaned things up, there was also some little miscommunications about policies, we had a standalone policies that Melissa pointed out that didn't quite get added in, and I just wonder if A, someone that we're paying as a standalone project to just focus on this would be more in tune to those kinds of things, or B, an ad hoc committee of volunteers and some of us, maybe a select board member, maybe the town administrator, maybe the HR director, maybe a few residents who are, who have a lot of experience in the field uh, would have more time and expertise to identify the right way to do this. Uh, but I can see, I mean, that's a problem with ad hoc committees, is you don't know what you're getting, the problem with hiring someone to do it is money, but we do have money left in the special article, which we were, we don't.
Well, you've got a plan to use that to pay for the, or share next year.
Yes, so that is what we could use it for, or we could not encumber it or transfer and just let it roll into free cash. So it's money that we'd be spending, but we don't have to go to town meeting or anyone else to spend it, I'm not understanding, because it's in as human resources expenses.
Right, but if we can't use it, you can't double dip, so if we're gonna use that money to pay our chair of the HR director, we can't also use the money to pay someone to do it.
Yes, so I mean, it's money that we would have to spend, and then we don't have it anymore, but it is money that's available to us without kind of need it. That, I mean, I I wonder if that isn't the cleanest way to go, it, I think the estimates we got were, were around five thousand, six thousand dollars, which is a, which is a bit of money. But having unclear policies can cost lots more in time, effort, and eventually money when we run into problems.
Can you, do you have a memory, you mentioned one already, but I don't, I didn't write it down. What were your, what's your memory of examples of things that you found, um, mentioned in multiple places that possibly conflict?
Um, that was the, that was the main thing that I was looking at was, um, uh, discipline and termination.
Okay.
I mean, and one thing, it's saying there's gonna be a progressive action plan, and you have to follow this before termination, I don't know if that's only the progressive action plan is implemented, but then another time it says, you know, termination should usually be done after this, but sometimes it's just the first option. I think the definitions here are always kind of a problem in some ways, because they're not always clear. It's every time that the HR director, the town administrator, and/or the select board are involved, it seems like there's a little bit of confusion in this document as to who is doing what. Is it the HR director, the town administrator, as of right now, the select board is the only is the appoint, is the hiring and firing authority, not the HR director, not the town administrator, who make recommendations to the select board. But it just seems like there's a lack of clarity in there. Another thing I noticed was that in in a suspension, it says during a suspension, if improvements are not made, then the employee will be terminated, but I don't know how you would ever
Improve during suspension?
Improve during suspension.
Right.
So I mean, there's things like that, that I just, I feel like it needs a lot of work, and one way to do it would be the select work, but it would eat up a lot of our time. And I feel like it would make more sense to hire somebody or find a ad hoc committee.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I think when I was reading it, I wasn't looking specifically for that kind of problem, so I didn't catch it because I wasn't, that's not what I was looking for. I was kind of looking for things she had flagged, so I think I'd like to look at it to get a sense of how big a project I think that is.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that if, I, the other, the thing I was gonna mention is that we do have a bunch of standalone policies that I don't think are made it in.
Yes.
Um, so I just want to get a sense of how big I think the project is, because I'd like to hear from Sophia whether she thinks she could undertake that. But we have to be clear on what the scope of that would be before she thinks that's a good answer.
Yeah, and she's certainly, uh, she's certainly an option, I just think the option it's like we're doing is gonna be clumsy and time-consuming.
For sure, though, I think she's gonna want us to make decisions about some things that are in there, I mean, she's, she's already flagged some that we might want to consider. Um, or that we have to make decisions on, that I know that in my conversation today about sick leave policy, um, I, I also brought this up because I knew it was on tonight, and I just, for instance, like, here's one that says needs approval, because we would have to approve it. Um, so, and we don't necessarily have to do that tonight if there's all these other changes we want, but I'm just saying, like, eventually we will have to go through it and approve it.
Yes, yes, I do.
But you want to get it right first, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think doing that at this stage, I would just send in so many track changes and it would be kind of messy.
Right.
Um, Mickey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was, you know, I agreed that having a professional do it, I was just gonna say, make sure you give them the professional, all of your standalone
First.
policies, so that they can incorporate them correctly. So that they have those things given to them, they won't just go with standard things, they will be able to incorporate all our little special, strange things.
Well, and I think part of it is incorporating those things, and part of it is getting rid of any special, strange things and making it consistent.
Yeah, I think that, and they would be able to know, you know, how to do that, where to put the special articles and stuff. Um, and I just think you, it's a, a good way to spend money. Because you get, you need a good handbook.
Yeah. Okay, so do we want to come back to this next week, Susan?
I would like to, I just want, I, I want to look at it a little more closely, just to get a handle on how big the problem is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that should, my sense is that I just think of, okay, this problem would come up or that problem would come up, and I would look at the handbook and find different find different answers in different places. And the, the main things, like I said, is the discipline, disciplinary and progressive action, progressive disciplinary spots. And then what, what is the relationship between the town administrator, the HR director, and the select board? Every time something comes up where the TA recommends something to the select board, or the HR director recommends something to the TA, or is it always?
We have a clear flow of, right?
Yeah.
It has to be consistent, and it has to be clear.
And I don't think it should be like, well, for this type of discipline, it goes from the HR director, the TA, to the select board, for this kind, the select board just kind of picks it up. And then for this kind, the select board, the town, it's gotta be, it's gotta be consistent.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll take that on next week.
On a related item, um, because it came up last night at the meeting with the finance committee, the question of part-time employee sick leave. So I had a, an excellent conversation today with, um, Sophia about how, trying to think through some of the issues involved and how to think about that, she gave me some language, I think she also sent it to you, because I know you're recusing yourself. I don't think you have to leave the room for this conversation. Um, the one thing I did realize, and Melissa and I talked about this, is uh, um, I don't think it actually costs the town for most of the part-time employee positions if a person takes sick leave, because we've calculated their, all their hours for the year when we do their wage line. And if someone is sick, we're paying them for hours they didn't work. But if they're not making those hours up in every day, it doesn't actually change what they get paid, right? They're getting paid what they would have been paid, so the only time it would cost the town additional money is if someone else had to cover that and we had to pay them that. For instance, if the, someone is sick at the transfer station on a weekend, and we have to get someone to cover that to the transfer sta- and we have to get someone to cover that so the transfer station can be open, we might have to pay that person. But if that's another employee of the town, that person like has a salary that's also being covered. So I, I think that mostly what the town would see in terms of cost for this would be a potential decrease in turnbacks at the end of the year. Because if, let's say a part-time employee was sick two days, right? They would have been paid for those hours, whereas under the old policy they wouldn't. But I don't think it costs us anything.
Other than the potential of a substitute.
Exactly.
Right, for that.
Right, so I, I just wanted to put that on the table because I think that changes the nature of the conversation a little from eleven thousand to not eleven thousand is, is substantial, um.
It's not like seven thousand.
It was, but I had a speculative, there was a couple of people that are missing, Mary was missing.
Okay.
Um, so, but I, I think that's an important factor in there. And um, I did also send uh, an email to Mark um, with a CC to John um, making sure, because I wanted to get details on how they calculated it, just, just to see. I want everybody doing it the same way. We're gonna do it for everyone in town, I think we need to do it the same way for everyone in town. So I just wanna know how they worked out the other day. And I also sent them the language Sophia, that we, I'm hoping we'll discuss next week.
I have a bunch of papers that Mark, standalone reporters to bring in here. And I, I have a copy too, I've not had a chance to look at it at all.
Okay.
But this is all about sick time in Massachusetts. This whole one thing, it's all, you know, frequently asked questions and stuff, so I will give you these.
I'm happy to look at it, in the end, how we actually, which of those things, because we looked at a bunch of things today, Sophia and I. Um, there's a lot of people that do this and a lot of people who do it very differently from each other. Uh, which, you know, so in the end, the devil's in the details because you gotta make a lot of choices. And you know, there isn't necessarily a right and a wrong. But I just think that everybody should make the same choices for everybody, so it's consistent, that's all, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's equal across the board.
Right, I didn't have an email for you or I would have sent it to you, I don't have, that's fine. But that's why you didn't get it.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to that next week in general, the employee handbook.
Cool.
Um, noise by law for annual coming in. Remember when Camp Kamama Half Moon, neighbors came in?
Uh huh.
And they asked us to consider an unreasonable noise by law, or noise by law.
Yep.
Um. I've learned, I mean, in discussions with the police chief since then and at the time the sergeant, but now the chief. Um, basically if the police show up and there's a noise complaint, the only, the only thing that they can charge them with is disturbance of the peace, which is a pretty high uh, charge. And instituting an, a noise by law would in some ways diminish um, the punishments, but also make it, you know, uh, uh, a more understood that after nine, nine PM or whatever the time is set, uh, things need to be more quiet. Um, one second, Wendy, sorry. Um, so Melissa forwarded to me the town of Paxton, which seems like a pretty standard noise by law. I don't know that it worked for Monterey, but I didn't really wanna proceed without touching base with you all first and seeing if you, it's, if it's something you even want to consider.
I didn't see it today.
Yeah, I, I only got it till like five thirty.
I think he means the content, not necessarily the specific.
Yeah, not the specific language, but is it something we wanna do?
I think it's something we should look into.
I do too, and.
We've got people in both that's town hollering about camp noise.
The, and I'm just gonna flag one, just like I just pulled this up. The thing that comes to me immediately is things like the reasonable use of amplifiers or loudspeakers are specifically exempted, which would actually not solve our problem because that was one of the main issues was what I would call unusable use of public interest systems and amplifiers. So um, I, and David found another one that was like, I thought very unworthy because it's super complicated and involved lots of different zones within a town and different levels of noise that have to be measured with a meter and like it was super complicated. So I, I think, I do think we should do it, but I also, having looked at a couple, the reason I didn't bring one forward is that I did not come across one that I thought both addressed our issue and wasn't so complicated that it would become a problem to enforce.
Yeah, uh, Wendy, your main?
I'm confused. When we had problems with Hume and their noise levels and their loudspeakers, Gareth, our chief of police, gave a report to us townpeople and said that we did have, I don't know what you wanna call them, bylaws. He said that they were within the timeframe, in other words, ten PM to seven AM, you can't have loudspeakers. This is what Gareth told us. And also they measured the decibel levels and the decibel levels were just below the maximum. So we've been down this road before and I thought we already had something in our town ordinances. But, so what was Gareth, so what was Gareth saying?
I'm not familiar with it. I know that there's police policies and procedures.
The disturbing the peace is before seven AM and after ten PM, that's when the police can get involved. And, and it has specific guidelines and it's only during those hours. And um, there, there are concerns, the concern that I recall Gareth expressing to me at least was that um, it, it was limiting in terms of what they could do and um, once they go down that path, it involves legal measures that become, oh, not legal measures, what would, what would, it basically that it's a, is it a felony?
It's a misdemeanor, I think it need to be a felony maybe.
I think it might be.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't know for a fact.
Disturbing the peace.
No, it was just simple, I just thought we had some written guidelines in our town.
There's nothing in town bylaws, so.
So, and.
Gareth, so Gareth.
I have no clue, I'm not familiar.
So Gareth was making a determination as chief of police as what Melissa just said, that it had to do with disturbing the peace.
That was what I understood him to say to me.
Okay, okay, then maybe we oughta look into getting something written down in this town.
So for instance, the penalty system, this draft policy, the first violation is a verbal or written warning. The second violation is a fine not less than one hundred dollars. Third, two hundred dollars, further violations, three hundred.
How old is this policy?
I don't know.
Because for the camp, like I guess you have to just pay the violation every time?
Well, yeah, but I think, I think the point being, the police can do something to enforce it without sending you to court.
Right.
Because they're probably pretty hesitant to send up somebody to court for loud music. But if they can say, we're giving you a verbal warning and the second time's a hundred dollars, it's probably more reasonably enforced. So if we're on board, what I'll do is I'll take this, try and fit it to Monterey and then I'll bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
You can always add to it.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
At least read it through.
Yeah. Paxton, I think is a fairly small town, maybe not small town, but near Worcester.
Like this, any ordinance relates to all of us in town. So that could be your next story yourself, that's being affected by something like that. At ten o'clock, you're having a wedding somewhere out in the tulips, like where you live and.
Yeah.
You know, Terry's a little tired tonight, you don't wanna hear anyone.
I hear it.
So.
You wanna hear a funny story? Ted Falcon.
Related to this?
Yes, Ted Falcon, the chief of police at the time, shut down my sweet sixteen party on the lake. At, at ten o'clock.
Two years ago.
Because you didn't invite him.
And we were at a fiftieth anniversary party for Sylvia, I'm sorry, the lake, and the police came around eleven, said it was too loud.
Uh, Kyle, hey, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, uh, I hope you can, I hope you can hear me, thanks for raising this issue.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Representing both twenty-four and twenty-six, Seven Arts Road, who are properly joiners to the camp. And we, we support looking into a, a sound ordinance, particularly during the summer camp season. Uh, and maybe even after the camp season, the ordinance actually extends to business hours, not camping hours. Because we know the camp has events to eight o'clock at night. But after the camp ends at the end of the summer, we will consider something during sort of normal business hours so that we can have a, a sort of a normal expectation of quiet.
Yeah, I mean, that could probably be written into the bylaw. We would have to consider whether or not we wanted a seasonal, seasonal change. Um, that's an interesting idea, thanks for sharing.
The, this, just to clarify, the seasonal piece also will then support the fact that the camp needs to respect the non-summer season quiet zone. It can by chance have some other event in November, as you see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're running twelve months a year.
Yeah, it, it can't just be from June to July.
No, they run twelve months a year.
Right, noise is noise or whatever it is.
My expectation would be this would be a twelve month year.
Yeah, yes.
So yeah, okay, well, come back for the actual question.
And also, there's always a question, you can make those things in there that if you're having a party. Like, does it need to be a different, it's a special event, and campus running music every night for the event?
Well, so here's something.
If you're having a special event, if you're having a party, an anniversary or whatever, we could make an allowance for you to come before us and we, like, can we have a part of the party?
So we do have this, which is E in this policy for exemptions is noise from activities which have been duly licensed, permitted or otherwise allowed by a governmental body.
Right.
Permitting, um, but I don't know if we want that exemption.
I, I don't know if we do or not, but like, I think if someone.
Camps are permitted, so I think we can't get an exemption out of some of those.
Yeah, but you have to structure it, but I'm just saying, I have a different feeling about my neighbor having a sixtieth anniversary party and having music, you should, yeah.
Well, you won't call it.
Maybe the sixty is very familiar.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't it, because I know my neighbors, like, somebody might do it to me. I don't need the banners, whatever, do it, but some people can have neighbors they don't get along with. But people should be able to, I'm not saying, I mean, if you come in before us every other month to get a permit to have music till one in the morning, I'm gonna go, me or me or. But, but somebody should be able to have a party, a sweet sixteen or a special event and not necessarily have to be quiet by ten PM, right? Because we're not all eight years old.
No.
So many of us do, can stay up later.
I don't agree with that. I think that, you know, you can go to your neighbors and we certainly have in the past, like.
I think ten PM to ten PM, that's it.
You know, it is, and that's life and that's the way it goes. But when you have a party and you're friends with your neighbors, like we are on Buckingham Road and Stratford Lane, somebody says, you know, Mike's gonna have a party and we not, we may not be finished at ten, but you know, because the fire pit's gonna go to eleven, the neighbors are fine, nobody's gonna call the police when you talk to your neighbor. So it, it's not that offensive, it's not going to hurt a lot of people if we say ten o'clock till eight in the morning.
Well, let, let what you just said ring true, talk to your neighbors and that's all I'm gonna say.
Well, we tried, some people don't listen, so.
But when you live on the lake, you have a lot of neighbors.
Oh, I believe, I lived on the lake.
Sound carries.
And it carries like crazy.
Yeah. Does that have something in it about measuring decimals and stuff?
I mean, the one that we're gonna look at.
Yeah, that one doesn't.
It does not.
Because I just, I think it was Gareth that had mentioned once, I would be careful with that because, you know, lawn mowers and jet skis can be above the decimal level.
Well, you might not want to be mowing lawns at midnight.
Like, oh, there, no problem. I have a neighbor that mows at night.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, I don't even know what to say to that.
Um.
And he's still alive.
So.
And I'm in Tulane now.
Yeah, to be continued, okay.
Can I throw to other um, potential, I, that I, I, I will bring, I haven't sent you any stuff, but I will, I just wanna put it on the agenda for next week. I would like us to consider uh, short-term rental taxes.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, I know that we've had since, in the short, since I've been on the board, there have already been three incidents where poorly maintained private ways have caused problems for public ways. I have not yet found that there is a section of MGL that applies to private ways, but it, it worded and I, I think we need to talk to council on this, which is why I'm bringing it up. It's worded in a way that makes it sound like it's a people on the private way ask for help from the town. But that's not really our situation. Our situation is that there are some private ways where the people aren't getting together to maintain the road and it's creating problems. And the problems are being created not just with people on the private way, but for the public way that are joining the ride. So the question for the council would be what, you know, how could we create a bylaw that would allow us to deal with that problem and to make sure that the people on the private way are the ones carrying the cost of the things, that they are responsible for, but are refusing to do. To me, it's just like not paying the taxes.
Well, and I would be curious to know, because Jim had drafted an invoice to the residents of a private way when, when the highway department had to do cleanup for damage.
Was that West Road?
Yes, and.
Did he ever send it?
No, and we never sent it. I think he, it was only a proposed invoice. But the, but the question being, the question being, if we can do that and that's legal, then that's.
That's, that's the question.
But I mean, if that's a legal way to do it, uh, then that's that, as far as I'm concerned.
It would be curious for the question though, that it raises to me, who do you send it to?
Well, usually there's a property owner. On a private road, it, with an association, I mean, we have problems.
Well, there's not necessarily, because it's the association.
If there is an association, but some of the roads have associations and some of them don't. Some of them seem to, according to Jim, from what I understood, sometimes there isn't anyone who's willing to take responsibility for the road. So then the town is in a position where they have to figure out who is responsible for the road, if anyone is legally responsible for it.
So let's say off the Yewby Road, let's just use Yewby Wood Circle as an example.
Okay.
I don't know anything about it, although I know that there's houses that go up, it goes up and around, comes back. So somehow that must have been a subdivision at one point that used the driveway that had access to Yewby Road that was granted the use. So somebody was granted that use, it's gotta be in our paperwork somewhere.
It can, I do think sometimes it can get messy because it wasn't done like that. Like Buckingham and Stratford Road, Buckingham Lane and Stratford Lane, are they both lanes? Who, what is the setup for plowing and maintaining that road? Is there an organization, a nonprofit, it, what goes on?
Well, it's no, it's not a nonprofit, it's, it's basically, uh, what do we call it? Lake Garfield Estates or something. We are totally responsible for every part of the road, maintaining it, snow plowing, everything we pay for.
And I understand privately, privately.
Are there dues? Do you pay dues into an organization?
Well, we, we've been doing it basically on an ad hoc basis. So when they say we have to regrade the road, we get a proposal and then we split up the money and we pay for it as we go along.
And it usually gets paid without much problems?
We always pay it.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we maintain that property seven, you know, twelve months a year. So the town hasn't had to be involved.
I know the town, the town will never get involved in maintaining a private road, I'm just.
Oh, if it's an association, it's not a nonprofit.
I'm just concerned, my only concern is that some of these private, private roads, private ways are not maintained uh, to uh, in a way that if they got an invoice from the town, there would be a clear person to hold, a clear organization or person to hold accountable if that invoice isn't paid. That, like, I think the way Elephant Rock, Elephant Rock Road is plowed, I'm not certain of this, but it's my understanding that whoever is plowing each driveway just kinda plows into their, into the driveway they need to get to and there's no communal payment for plowing an Elephant Rock Road. And so if they got an invoice, who do you send it to? And if it doesn't get paid, who's held accountable? And you just kinda hear these, it mostly comes up with plowing.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
That, that would be my only.
That's a good point, is, so then that would have to be. Method of identifying these locations.
Yep.
And then going from there.
So we, like, we have to come up with a list of all the private ways and see if we can actually figure out. Who is, if there is an entity.
Yeah.
Responsible for each of them, like, clearly there are for some, but we also know that it's a little sketchy around the others. Um, because in the end, if there's damage coming to the public way. Like, I, you know, it's their problem if they can't work out how to, how to fix their own access. But once their failure affects a public way.
Oh, definitely.
We should be able to recoup the money that we have to.
I agree.
Fix it.
Yes, John.
Um, so I guess it's a question of what kind of recourse do we have?
Yeah.
Other towns must have dealt with it.
They also go back to the curb cut. Who was issued the curb, the initial curb cut from D P W?
The curb cut from the public way?
Yes.
But what if that, I mean, but sometimes somebody does that and sells up all the properties and then they're gone, years and years ago.
Does it stay with the D?
Well, then it goes back to what, so we need to identify and identify again.
Right, or re-identify it somehow.
Yeah. I'm in favor of finding a solution to this.
Right, so.
I wonder if it involves a bylaw or if we are legally allowed to send invoices because of damage done to the public way from a private way. And we know the process for doing that, then that's that.
Yeah, and, and if.
I know it's just to get at. Jim.
He doesn't know.
How could he not know?
That's exactly the problem, that I am here before you, because he's like, this is a problem and we can't figure it out ourselves, we can't even figure out who's responsible for the road.
I mean, he doesn't know. If, if he goes to the end of. Joe Smo's driveway that's coming into Route twenty-three and it's washed down to the road.
If it's a single driveway, it's clear. It's the, it's the shared road, like the West Roads or the, what was the one?
And furthermore, there's confusion.
Which side?
Yeah, because you were on the board at this time. Certain residents are saying. He owns the road and he's saying.
Oh, West Road is a mess.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, well, it's, you know, it really is a mess. People like to think it's a mess, but it's really, I believe Sean Tucker belongs to it.
Some of the other peo-, uh, I don't know that, there's disagreement. I'm not saying you're not right.
I'm not saying I'm right either, but that's what I recall.
So we can't be the only town that has this.
Just some property just the other day was sold at the very top of West Road.
By the town?
No, by an individual. Who bought maybe six acres.
Okay.
And during the process, he was queried by said. The fugue, our owner of the, I'm not saying any more names. That. He was now the owner of the road. By buying the property or something, or he had to buy the road also, and I was like, no, I'm just buying this piece of land, you own the road. So he went away kind of with the death between his legs, because he understood, yeah, I do. But he was once again trying. So I have responsibility, because there's been zero maintenance. The last time that road was maintained was when. The bomber. Was up there, right?
Yeah.
And the town came up because they had all this fireworks that they didn't want to travel down, and they know bumping roads, so they came up with. All that gravel. And made the road smooth so they could take the fireworks out.
So this, you can't be the only town that's ever faced it.
Yeah, no.
So I guess the question to council is, what legal recourse do we have to recoup the cost of the town's done to public ways? By a poorly maintained private way, and, and how do we, you know, how do we do that? And B. Does it take, I mean, if we need a bylaw, what kind of bylaw would that, what, we need some legal language?
Yeah.
So that we can, you know, we need a pathway to identify who the responsible parties are and how to hold them accountable.
Next office over, Don Fosson. Should have all of that information.
Well, I think what we should go to.
He'd have all the cartography maps, I mean, he would know every single.
Who owns the actual road.
Road. Not, maybe not, but he would be able to identify the ones that are multiple houses leaving off of.
So. Why don't, I think it's really at this point a question for council of how do we deal with. Private roads damaging a public way, do we need to adopt a bylaw? Can we send invoices if we send an invoice? I mean, we can't. So if, if you're, yeah, yeah, so if you're. Good with that, then I will go to town council and just to formulate some questions and, and get some responses. And then at that point, we can determine whether or not we want to adopt the bylaw. And I know that I had had that on my list as well, and I always just assumed that it dealt more with the problem, but you're saying it doesn't. I had never gone to it, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I'm happy that it's, I can pull it up for you, I'm, I'm happy.
The number bylaw?
Yeah.
I have it, right down from there.
But the, our bylaw, so just so you know.
Yes.
Our bylaw, that section was pulled and now it's, I think it's section, something E, go to N. Because it was, that was repealed in M G L, but then they.
There is no.
They, right, no, N is the new one. I think that will be, ours, we adopted one that doesn't exist anymore, it was repealed.
Okay.
So I don't know what happens if you adopt one that then gets repealed, if you automatically get that new one, or if you have to adopt the new ones separately.
I, I know.
I don't know either, but it's gonna come up because of the bylaw review committee.
Right.
Um. The fiscal year twenty-four dispatch contract. For coming shares. Which is for eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven seventy-eight, and we have this money budgeted.
I'd make it more than to accept it as well.
Second, any other discussion? There being no call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Unanimous, yes, vote. I see a clean copy, I guess, thank you. Okay, do I need to sign it somewhere?
Just said approved as two four.
But should I just sign it right here?
Oh, sorry, I signed there on the.
Okay, well, there's no, it's weird to not have a printed and a. Signature thing, but that's that.
Okay.
Amended letter to three nineteen, right now. You said that, the.
Of course, because the money ended up.
Yeah.
She found a couple typos and I think there was something else that had to be changed in there. All right, am I just, am I citing this after we look at it?
The money got increased. But, I mean, it was confusing and you explained to me that, I'll just redo this.
Well, I sent you what Courtney sent.
Yeah. Because I had some questions about the money not adding up, and so I once forwarded them to B R P C.
Oh, huh.
And B R P C got back.
And did they come clean with the math?
Oh, read it too.
You have to read it, please.
No, it's confusing, okay. What she wrote is. Yeah, this gets a bit confusing because we are shuffling the amounts going into match based on the community compact grant. We basically shuffled all the funds based on what they could be used for. What and how they would, could match. We are increasing the overall, amount overall, but also this decreases certain line items. It might be most helpful to look at the current budget. Next to the request increase. I admit it is confusing to follow. This doesn't change the town's commitment to the grant, which is in-kind labor.
Right, it does change the amount, but we can use in-kind.
This is still not asking for just an appropriation from county to grant, it's all in-kind and stuff that's already been done, like Dennis mentioned.
And if we're compact and.
Doing a compact and other grants, so it's still. Zero dollars in terms of raising and appropriating just for a match. Um, I would move to approve the amended, uh, letter to the three nineteen grant second. Any other discussion? There being no call vote?
Yes.
Yes, and yes, so it's unanimous. So, in, under Mallow's correspondence, Ken Bazner. Reached out and he. Thinks, I guess based on his experience on the select ward, maybe just as a resident, he didn't mention his previous select ward experience. But that it might be helpful to have, um. Saturday morning office hours for the town clerk, or Friday afternoon office hours for the town clerk. Or Tuesday afternoon. And I think we're still in the process of hiring a town clerk, but we might. Keep his reasoning in consideration when we do. Set a schedule.
Yeah, I think all of his concerns are valid. We've always tried to get the town clerk's hours to weed in and out of town's needs as well as citizens' needs. And that shouldn't be any different now.
Yeah.
I don't want to be the board that sets our hours, I mean, I think that. You know, we may have to say, we want this for, for us, or for the town all, but. Citizens need to tell us what they need, the rest of the top of the court.
I s-, I still think we should, if, if we're really wanna ask what people want for hours instead of catch-cagging hand, what, who happens to say something?
Well, you.
We should put it out there in a survey. We should like, either let's keep it during regular office hours. Or one evening a week, because every other town in the Commonwealth does not have Saturday hours. If we're gonna go with Saturday hours, I'm not opposed to it, but I would like some evidence that people are actually.
Want it.
Wanted, right, that's all I'm asking for. So if we really wanna go that way, instead of just having, you know, people piping up, but I want this. Let's get a survey and ask.
How do we do a survey?
They're, they have one drafted.
Put it out.
Um, and I don't know what the timeline should be like for that, we need to make sure that people are informed.
Oh, that was, I should read, that was very confusing.
What?
I bet, maybe it was.
I'm not going there.
Do you want it? No, it's very biased, but.
We were trying to give, you know, I can make it simpler if you want.
I know, a lot of different.
Could we make it simpler and just say?
When do you want it?
I also, I would like to know what, I would like to have some sense of who's actually needed to go to the clerk for what.
Tell us when you want it. And let us know.
Maybe we should say what time of day and what day it would be.
Well, I must say, asking what you're going to the clerk for is.
No, no, hush on.
I mean, you're not going for shoes.
No, so I ask them for a reason.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of people that think I'm the town clerk, and so I have a funny feeling that they're gonna put down things that they're coming to me for.
Ah, okay. Because I was wondering why, why that list was there, because.
That's my exact.
You go there for just those things.
And I think recently, I mean, how many marriage licenses are you gonna go for? But recently.
Personally, or you?
We're hoping.
I just mean, it's.
That's one.
In, in general, not more than a few in lifetime, in general, but there's exceptions, but, um. The one that's come up a lot lately, especially with the new laws, is the voter registration, and the state is, has only been increasing access to voter registration. And changing your party, and when you move, and that's the one that I think. Uh, is probably gonna be the vast majority. I mean, also dog licenses you can come in for, but I think it's pretty simple to just mail it. And not have a meeting, but it's voter registration is the, is the big deal.
Typically, you can do it online.
Can you register vote online?
Plus, there's, um, usually extra hours prior to elections for a bunch of stuff now.
I mean, they have to be on weekends, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And so that's the thing, is this person, whether or not they have weekend hours, uh, regularly, they're going to need to work some weekend hours near the election.
At least every other year.
I would think most clerks understand that election times.
If they serve.
But we don't know we're hiring.
Yeah, if they serve as a clerk, we, that, so far, all of the applicants have no clerk experience.
Please, are you serious?
Yeah. When I said it was really hard to hire right now, I was not kidding.
Oh, I know that.
Yes, I mean, keep in mind with Saturdays too, I mean, we're having a hard time finding people to work the transportation, which is weekends, and if we wanna stay competitive with other towns, no other towns are open on Saturdays, so.
That could make, give us an edge, though. We could, that could open us to people who are working at another town during the weekend, would take it for hours. I don't know, I'm throwing that out there, like, it could work against us or for us, I don't know how to address that.
We're not like other towns, we have the library open Saturday morning and night, and the community center always has.
Well, we're, we are looking for Monterey from our point of view, and, uh.
Well, we think about their hours after we get somebody.
We can do that, I mean, I'm not opposed to saying a survey, but just to bed with a survey.
I mean, I know that they're gonna be. You know.
But, but if we're insisting that we're offering Saturday hours because people want Saturday hours, I'd actually like to hear from. People rather than just people who are upset.
Yeah, well, with our survey.
Because that's a different subset, right, that's why, that's all I'm proposing.
Ask them, instead of asking them.
Right.
Our hours.
Yeah. What hours would you prefer?
In addition to these.
Right.
What do you think?
Well, we could say, or we, sometimes you do make it simple and do a rank survey, so we say.
We got two.
Order these in the ranks you would prefer weekday office hours, weekday evening hours, weekend hours. One, two, three, what do you prefer?
And they only get three people to respond.
That's fine, then you only get three people to respond, everybody else might be, I just don't care.
What if it's a Saturday?
Then you have to have Saturday hours, like it's.
Oh, I'm planning.
Is the, um.
I'm only.
The B R, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and our town, we have that big survey that's.
The master plan survey.
Yeah, did, was there anything in there about town services? I can't remember, I feel like.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just, that would have been a good ton, okay.
Um, can we do the survey? But could we just do a simple, you know, what works best for you preference? Weekday hours, weekday evening hours, weekend hours? Because I think in general, most people. Don't, yeah, I think that's specific enough.
Or online, that would also be an interesting.
It's all, but online's always available. And we can even say, given that online services are available for most things, which of these would you prefer?
Okay, I think that's enough for that.
Uh, yes, I totally agree.
Uh, I do thank Ken for that letter. Citizen that took the time to read it.
Yeah. And I know, I know, yeah, Ken.
He can be a thoughtful guy.
Okay, approving minutes of February eighth.
There we are. In color. Oh, look, and we do have different colors today. Oh, just to clarify on this, as I understand it, there, yeah, there is now a meeting on Tuesday at six at S B.
Meeting on Tuesday. Southern.
Yeah, supposedly they're gonna offer a remote option. I'm happy to actually go, I'll, I'll just go.
Yes.
Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
Oh, you all can go, because you're allowed to attend other people's meetings, right?
As long as we're not deliberating on the town.
As long as you're not deliberating.
We've got a five o'clock finance, we, yeah, Tuesday, two o'clock. So we go there, you go there.
I can add a cover.
Yeah.
Let's see if finance will open it up, see if that you're not.
I could do, I could do a four o'clock meeting next week with finances.
So could I. And then I could, I would, I could, I'd have to leave by five thirty to get there, if that's fine, yeah?
Yeah. Four thirty. Yes, five thirty, sure.
Okay, maybe, can you please ask Michelle if we can do four o'clock on Tuesday?
She's lighting it down.
Thank you. And then you'll go to that, thank you, Susan, and it sounds like we can all go to that. So, if time allows, well. I had three, I think we'll just go with reported by Alex Sander Rubin from Myers in Harrington, instead of town council. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is my comment good?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of where it goes into.
It should say. The select ward would then ask for further items from town council instead of then refer to town council?
Would then.
And so, but yours works too.
Then refer to town council.
Your town council for advice on how to proceed, that's right, yeah, yours is funny. Yep.
I think we're getting the same thing.
Who's red, are you red?
Okay.
Yeah, you have small things.
Yeah, council is S E L if it's a word.
So the light, there's a little bit of discussion on um to widen to keep lovers.
We were trying to do the same thing.
Yeah, so. Can we go with what, what Susan wrote? Uh, so Susan summarized the three available options. One, to widen the river road and the pool road, don't let lawyers land to accommodate two-way traffic. Two, to keep lovers lean its current width and use livestock, to alternate one-way coverage, or three, to complete repairs and curbs for a grid one lane at a time and significantly increase repair time. In addition, we have several options for the service of lovers need. I'm fine with that, that works.
Okay.
Was that accurate description of this stuff?
I think accurate, I don't know.
Cold scouts.
Horses. Thanks a lot. I prefer not to make comments with anger, I don't know. No, I know. I, I totally agree with you. I just wonder about anger. Yeah, so we could just. That. Which um, the, I was fixing BRPC, but um I think she, the, the fix at Morehouse, Courtney Morehouse of the Parkshire Regional Planning Commission Jim Monstrator Operations.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure the engineer was. Uh, number three, under correspondence, made some public comment on anticipated business. Okay, so.
It's not the DDP version?
Engineer, no, it's.
Like a Forsider something?
It's like a Forsida, it's not.
GTA?
No.
All right, I don't, I think that it's. Uh, one other thing here, uh, there was a double, and she was requiring a thing stabilization to prevent further erosion. Right, we'll just go with the purple there.
Yep. And I don't think it matters which one, as long as there's only one BRPC.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the minutes of February eighth as amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? There being none, we'll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval.
And I'd like to congratulate us on doing such a good job of keeping up with amendments. Thank you, Laura.
Congratulations.
And I, I, I did like, because I thought they were a little more thorough and covered a little more territory and clearer, so I appreciate that. Unanticipated things.
Yes.
Um, quarterly reports for the three nineteen grant, there's nothing to report, but they're making, let's put these in, so Courtney asked if you could sign them. Okay, it's just one person on the bottom.
Blank report?
Basically.
No match.
She said, okay, no match, and there was nothing to report, they want those ones.
The, the only thing is, what about the previous matches going back years? Or when are those gonna come into play?
This, this grant was just awarded.
Oh, this is not being given by road drainage.
It's an anti.
But aren't we uh matching like milfoil mitigation?
Yes, but I think that's not gonna be until they actually start the project, like the project starts its drawings and stuff.
Cause they did say we can go back.
Yes.
Years and years, like three years, so, okay.
Gee, that's a hundred fifty grand right there.
Yeah, nobody does.
I know, nobody, yeah, I just said that.
Absolutely, you should, the meeting, the kickoff meeting was just very, there was a lot going on because basically you can match this grant against that grant and that grant against that grant.
And then we had new gold versus this.
Yeah.
Aces. We were all confused.
Um, all right, I would move to approve the quarterly match certification form.
Second.
Any discussions, there being none, call vote?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, unanimous approval, just one signature on.
Yeah, the one where I dated it in the first page there.
Do I need to sign there as well?
Yes, sign there.
Am I, but I'm not, I'm not a contract lawyer.
Yeah, because that's DEP, so we're the author, right?
Okay. And then this is.
And then in between.
The grantee. Zero, oh, we don't have a contract hired, can you?
All right, the other thing was just, um, I keep forgetting to ask you, do we want to keep our hours the same at six for the shared HR? Or would you guys like to see more or less? My understanding that Sheffield is willing to give up some. We're gonna be having a meeting soon to just talk about what the actual budget's gonna be for the two twenty four for all the towns and if you guys would like.
How much does it cost per hour?
Shouldn't see that one coming.
Uh. How many does Sheffield drop?
It's a percentage thing. Sheffield's getting rid of like two, it's not many. Mark's gonna swoop them up if nobody else wants them, but I had originally mentioned when we were going through.
I was. Sophia feel about the amount of time she spends now for Monterey? Did she say we need more?
I think there's days that she's overwhelmed.
That she'd like to have another hour.
Well, when it's six hours, I know she's always from here, but is it your understanding that she is only working six hours in Monterey and then spending the last two hours? Cause she's worked eight hour days. It might be cleaner to just have eight hours.
Right. And it might be, and I did talk to her a little bit about it, and if she had eight, would she wanna split them up? Because right now, I think what she's finding tough is only being here on Wednesday, so she's catching up, catching up on a week's worth of emails.
Yes, that's definitely been challenging.
So you, you would be in favor of maybe two, four hour days or something?
Absolutely, I would be, personally.
Yeah, I would be. I think it's really hard when it, I know if I let my email go for a week, I regret it intensely. Um. I'll let them know and then I'll get you a new, I imagine, idea. Maybe a thousand or something, it's based on a percentage, so I just need to get that from Mark.
Yeah. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Make your.
Okay, um, I just wanna make clear to everybody that after last night, I just want you to know, I am not fighting with any of you. I am, I am, we are the trustees working for people, we are working. We are elected to work for the library, and so our focus is working for the library. And if doing so, we can also spread it out where other, talking about the sick time, part-time workers throughout the town can get sick pay, that's a bonus. But, you know, our focus has to be on the library, and I just wanted to be all clear that I'm not fighting with anybody. I'm just working hard for the library. And I have these pages that Mark locked down. And today, I, I actually got to sit down and read, I think, I think maybe three paragraphs. But I highlighted one section here. This was about caste, this woman wrote this book. And this is like an essay from it. And what it says here is, to do all that we can in our spheres of influence to make this a fairer world. Does that answer what we were trying to do last night? I mean, I go like, how did they get in there? And I just, you know, that happened to us last night, right? To do all that we can in our spheres of influence, this is our sphere, to make this a fairer world. And I just, that's all we wanna do. All we'd like to do is to make it a fairer world for the top part-time workers, so they're not second-class citizens in our town. Okay? And that's what I had to say.
Okay, um, do we, the stuff that came up last night after I left at last night, maybe? You were, we were just throwing out, you were throwing out a list of all the, you had tagged. Did any of those end up getting discussed, or did they get tabled for next week?
Can we just leave after?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, if you would stop up at the top of the hill, we would.
Oh, wait, man. Fuck, cause he's feeding, we know that. We gotta shut her up, let's shut her up.
I know, Scott, just using your bag.
I have a quick.
Mary May Company.
It's, it's short, uh, yeah, it's Mary from Main Road. I, I used, I used to work at the other biggest employer in town, Gold's Farm. Seven years full-time and there were four years part-time and some other years very, very part-time, but um was it, when I left in two thousand nineteen, they had a sick, uh, sick time, but they didn't tell the employees. And I had a friend that was looking at it, and she was about to leave because she was dealing with a chronic illness. And it was getting too stressful on her because she needed to go to the doctor now and then. And so she finally told her supervisor, and they said, oh, well, you can get sick time. So likewise, some people in town didn't know, didn't realize that they could have tried to get paid for uh the COVID time if they were sick with COVID. So it's hard if you, if you don't. It's hard if people don't know what they have, and I know you're really trying to do that this year by letting people know, these are your, I forget what you called it, but like all the benefits, not just the money, but here's your package.
Right.
You were working on that. So I did a little quick research, I don't know if it was quick and dirty, but quick about what do people gain from sick time and it. There's a lot of studies showing, as you can imagine, there's less turnover, there's more retention. And that's all, thank you.
Just, just so you guys know, like, I think that Scott and I discussed briefly last night, we both support the idea. Now it's, now we're at the point where it's ironing out the annoying details, like how many hours of sick time do you accrue for how many hours of work? And how many hours can you carry over from one year to another? And like, all the things that make you wanna, personally, when I have to do that. Those things make me wanna shoot myself in the head. And, and we pulled up a ton of different ones from different towns. Everybody has a different, like, there's lots of different solutions. There's no right answer, but you have to make decisions about all of it, so.
You know, there, there are ways to, you know, so if you work so many hours, you get, you know, another hour of.
Right.
You get an hour of sick time. After thirty hours, you get an hour.
It's not about what the way is, it's about deciding what the number is.
Yeah, but I mean, there is a, there is a, I think there is a formula in the state rules.
There, there's more than one allowable.
I, I didn't, I just picked them up today and I didn't read them.
Well, and if you do, if you decide instead of using ad hoc people, I don't know if any of the ad hoc people last time were professionals, but if you're redoing the HR handbook and you have some professional uh people that do, have done a lot of professional, you know, legal work with HR or industry law, whatever you wanna call it. Maybe they can advise on that too.
In the end, I think we need to make a decision so we can put it in the budget. And it may get revised.
And, and yeah, it could, it could be revised. It could be for this year, this is what it is, and it's still under, you know, you could. It's still under review, so we'll have final answer next year, but this is, we got something. And something is better than nothing.
I agree.
And it, and it makes people feel better about themselves, and then like Mary says, I mean, to know that you can have, if you didn't know you could have sick pay. Now, that's a good way to, we have sick pay, we just don't tell anybody. Therefore, we don't have to spend a lot of sick pay. Great philosophy.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Might as well.
It's not, but it's not even a clock.
Might as well, makes no wonder.